I really wanted to, as I was thinking about pulling the report together tonight, I thought a lot about Fire Chief Mark Scudder and his massive, massive lead. Certainly a tremendous procession in the community when they brought him home as well as the services. I sat there at the services Friday afternoon, tremendous support from really a variety of entities and agencies from across the region. Huge void with Mark's passing, as we all know, Mark and Mike really have been kind of heart and soul for the last 40 years, you know, from a city perspective. And Mike and I had a chance to visit Friday afternoon, you know, how do we take those steps forward to help him through this point in time. So Cynthia and I will certainly work back with Mike and counsel through that. But just really wanted to, more than anything, to contribute more. Really neat things happening this week with our police department. Part of the reason we kept the agenda down, I think it's a quick title, it's not eight to eight-thirty, it's six to eight-thirty.
Six o'clock to sure.
So six o'clock tonight, they start our annual police chief. Mr. Lozoya is here this evening. I asked him to attend because we do have a Speed Zone item on the agenda, but he'll head out to program park three to group there. Tomorrow morning, Coffee with Cop, American Legion, and it'll be a nice opportunity to interact with our police department. And then Irma over at McDonald's is working with our team, ice cream with an officer this Saturday. I had asked Darrell to give counsel an update on October 15th meeting, what's been happening relative to that department since he's been our police chief. Really neat event last week, Coffee with City Manager. Got a few folks here in our audience this evening that attended. Didn't know whether we'd have two people or 20. Ended up over the two-hour period with about 20 to 25 participants. The topics ranged everything from how do we work with our humane society out of the animal shelter, to paging, speeding, 180-day plan, city vision plan. Thought it was well, well-received. What Cynthia and I have talked about is how do we schedule this every month and look at a variety of different places. So our next one will be over at Centennial School. Because I think as Counselor Olivas, you know, mentioned in our earlier session today, that sometimes getting out of City Hall to other venues helps encourage people to attend. And so that will be the focus there. We will always post that it's a meeting in case counsel wants to attend. And if you have a quorum, the senior-most member will have to call the group together and get us started. You know, kind of that third pillar in our 180-day plan really focused on leadership training. And we are working through that program and those different modules and what they're going to look like. And wanting to give a preview this evening, the approach that we're going to take with our staff. And everything from, you know, helping set the personal expectations and understanding the differences between management and leadership. Think of each of these sections, these first three sections here, as different modules. And we're going to work through having a module and having our supervisors and managers go back into their workplace for two or three weeks, work on some of the skills, and then come back, debrief on that, and then work through the next module. Everything to, you know, then developing themselves so that they become better leaders, and then setting that framework. Really looking at what are organizational strengths, who the people are on our team, and how we capitalize on those opportunities. And then you'll see some additional modules, how we set priorities, establish goals, track performance with team members. Then we start developing our team, assessing team member strengths and weaknesses, and helping everybody in your team establish individual goals and objectives. How do we do annual performance assessments? And then how do we have those candid conversations? It's interesting, I was visiting with a couple of members from the Chamber last, yesterday, and that's this whole, how do I bring in employees and train them and get them so that they stay at my institution for a long period of time. So I was sharing with Karen and Chris over there what we're going to be rolling out. And I think they're going to share that with, you know, the Chamber membership too, and say, hey, you know, if this is something you'll want to engage in longer term. So it's really exciting to have that discussion. This is the last slide of leadership training, but really, you know, thinking about difficult conversations, you know, not only with employees that work for you, but your peers, community members. And then, you know, how do we understand that role of city government, in their leadership position, how they interact with citizens, how they interact with other government entities. And then really, we'll wrap up that final training module with finalizing their plan and the next step. So we are tentatively looking at the end, the last week in October to be our launch point for Module One. I did reach back out to Centennial School and the Small Business Development Center. Heather Harrell has transferred up to the Alumni Relations Office, but I do think we'll get some help there and using their space and doing some field training. Any questions?
Good report, and I like the fact that you mentioned Mark Scudder. You know, he's a big story in this in the community, and great respect shown to him at the services last week.
Appreciate that. I do have just one last slide. Actually, there's two slides. We are opening a new cell out in Orlando. A cell just being a small area.
Ditch.
Our permit allows us to bury trash 20 feet. As we are opening the new cell, we're coming adjacent to a cell that had been closed out about 12 to 15 years ago. What we have found is that that cell that had been closed only had trash about 3 or 4 feet down. This is our asset as a city. When you have the ability to bury trash 20 feet, you want to bury trash 20 feet. And so Rod Pont and I are working back with Texas Disposal Systems, and we'll work back through with the previous vendor and the engineer that certified that trash had been buried down 20 feet. And then we'll address this. But I did want to make all of you aware in public meetings that this has come up and that we will work to resolve it.
I think when TBS first started operating here, they found that also.
Yes, sir.
I think you were saying at the time.
So is there potential liability that Nice Smith or Dr. Robert Face?
Yes.
Short answer, yes.
If they PE stamps off on something?
This likely occurred because they were dumping more than 20 times a day and putting it in a place that they didn't really, you know, dig out 20 feet deep. But they were probably getting paid for trash coming in over the limit, but we didn't know about it because putting it there is not supposed to know. Sort of a quick and dirty way to take care of extra trash.
So are there any liability ways because we found all this and dug it up, or it's just?
Well, Rod and I will work through that remediation plan, the TCEQ, and do we need to then... I hate to waste the space. Because it could be 10 to 12 years of lifespan of our landfill. We'll have to pour to understand how widespread this is. Oh, yes. Yes, it wasn't just a small mistake. I went out on site and looked at it. It was a rather large... I think the last time we had unearthed cells was at the beginning of my tenure back in late 2013, early 2014. So it's really only about every four years that we're digging up new cell. The cell is quite large. And so I do have a representation of what our landfill looks like. And if you think of this top area as where our construction demolition, so you come in off the highway here, and you turn up this way, and normally it tells you if it's construction demolition, you dump along the side. And then the trucks are dumping trash into here. So these were some of the initial cells that were used. We're now working, we were going to open this cell here, and we had to come all the way back and found that we had trash only buried at 3 feet, and some of that down the other place here too. So we'll... I've got a quote that's going out to see what quarrying looks like. It'll probably be a $4,000-$5,000 expense, but I'll quarry, work with the engineer for these areas, and then quarry over here, which, you know, trash was on CNE was being buried at the same time there, to see if they went to pull 20 feet. See, if you think about it, our landfill right now, as we project out, has about another 40, 42 years of lifespan to it. That's with burying trash at 40 or 20 feet. So if we can go back and recapture some of this area, it will extend the lifespan of landfill. We are an area exempt. We're one of the few landfills in the state. It's hard to get that exemption, and so we really want to use the entire landfill. So there's no action on council's part at this time. I just wanted to make you all aware of, you know, Rod and I have debriefed on this, and we've got my action.
Six steps.
No, sir, we will have at least two of the next council meeting.
Okay, let's go move on to public hearings. Public hearings update says, "We're reading comments on ordinance 2019-10-01, and ordinance of the City of Alpine, Texas, establishing a school zone adjacent to the Alpine High School along Highway 118 and State Highway 223, establishing speed limit in the school zone at 15 miles per hour with beacons or flashing of authorizing traffic control signs to be installed, and establishing a fine for the violation of this ordinance." Public? Any public comments? It's none, counsel. Okay, let's go on then. Consent agenda, minutes, financial reports, department-written reports, court appointments, et cetera, and notes to the public. The following items were routine administrative nature. The council has been furnished with background and support material. Each item and/or it has been discussed at a previous meeting. All items may will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a council member. In which event, the item or items will immediately be withdrawn for individual consideration in a stonewall sequence. After the items now requiring separate discussion have been acted upon, the remaining items will be adopted by one vote. City Manager?
Yes, the consent agenda has the minutes from our last meeting on September 17th, and the approval of Mr. Darren Hanson, replacing Keith Nixon on Parks and Recreation Board for inter-council.
Yes, sir.
So I move that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Okay, most please. Second, any discussion? You don't see? Yes, sir.
The only thing I want to say is to extend kudos to Keith Nixon. He basically bowed out of the Parks and Recreation Board, just too busy at home and doing other things. But maybe replaced by Darren Bass, but thank you, thank you very much for his contributions during the last few months as a member of the Park Board.
Okay, any more discussion? See none, call for the vote. Oppose in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign. Information or discussion items? We have none. And we'll go to item number nine. Action items to be accommodated by brief statement of facts, include where funds are coming from, if applicable. Action items limited up to 10 per meeting. Citizens are allowed to comment within two, three minutes. After being called upon by the mayor or mayor pro temp, citizens are required to state their names and the order with which they reside. Right away will be given to citizens of Alpine and those who own business or property in the city. Individuals who do not live in or own business or property, city limits of Alpine would be allowed to speak if there's time available. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor. I want is to discuss and consider, discuss, consider, and take appropriate action through Skyway Gardens Development Agreement and our city attorney, Rod Pont, provider.
Mayor, council, we have an engineer for the Skyway Gardens here. This is Highway 118. Down here would be Van Nuys Chalk 118. This is Letchagia Road, which is right now it's a Caliche Road that comes out from Highway 118 and heads east along the north boundary of the Skyway Gardens. So why don't you come forward? And Skyway Gardens has a proposed, is it 49-unit?
Yes, sir.
49-unit, it's not exactly apartments, it's not exactly houses, I guess more like condominium, sort of densely, dense area in there. So they had previously filed for and gotten a building permit from the city, but the plan here has not, had never been submitted to council or approved without backwards. You need to have the plan approved so that you can have a building permit to build something on the plan. So when I came in, I started talking with the engineer and with the owners, and we came up with an agreement on a development plan. Y'all should have that development plan before you. The development plan says that the builder, the owner, will pave Letchagia Street, or organs provides. The developers have to pave streets according to city standards. It also talks about, right here is a drainage pond, so all of the drainage for Skyway Gardens will go into that pond if there's a big rain, so it doesn't go flooding the neighbors. They're going to have to put in water, sewer, and gas from up here. There's a house up here on the north side of Letchagia Road. And so they'll bring their infrastructure to city water, sewer, and gas pipes up here at their cost, tap in at their cost, and then they'll distribute the water, sewer, and gas through their project according to city standards. They also have to put in a lift station for the sewer, and put it on their property and operate it, maintain it, on their side of the pipes. So we expect they have, we'll have to keep that up as part of their development. And their water system, as y'all know, the water pressure at that part of Alpine is low. And so they're going to put in a couple of water storage tanks with a one-way valve, and so they'll fill up their tanks, but then they'll pressurize their development with their own pump. So they're going to pressure up to fire and regular state standards for their area without affecting the pressure for the rest of the people in that area. The city staff has told me that the volume of water they have, that we have available there is adequate, it's just not the pressure. So they've agreed to all of those things that are set forth in the development agreement. So I recommend that the council pass the plan and the development agreement together because that will ensure that they follow the development agreement and the plan through their development.
Question? So they're going to go ahead and pave Letchagia?
Yes.
To the end of the development?
Yes, to the end.
Mayor? We can't get a discussion yet. We need a motion. So I would move that we approve the Skyway Gardens Development Agreement and the plan.
Also, the eighth second, now discussion, now back in talk.
Yes, and that was part of the, they've been thinking, I think that they agreed to pave it all the way to the end. And so the other part of it is that the developer and the city will cooperate to make sure that the private, private owners on Letchagia Road sign off on a deed that dedicates Letchagia Street to the public. So that will become a public street paved by them all the way to the east end of the development.
Also on the holding threshold one. That's not going to be lined or anything, so the water can seep through.
Right, water will seep out after a day, it'll disappear. But it'll be adequate to hold it, to keep it from sheeting across. The people on the north side were a little bit worried about getting too much water.
Correct, they were also worried about mosquitoes and whatnot with the water here. I mean, the soil here, soil force, it only lasts a couple of days and then it's gone. So like any rains change, really, where it amounts to, but a few days of stride.
And Alex is the engineer from, the associate.
Did I say everything correctly, sir?
So I do ask for questions. Ownership of Letchagia Road?
It will be dedicated to the pump it, so it'll be a pump it road the same way as Street is.
Okay, but who's, so you say dedicate, who's going to own it because right now it's privately owned?
Right now, the Letchagia Road is privately owned by three or four owners. They all have mutual easements back and forth between each other, they give each other the right to use the road. So we're going to have, we're going to make sure that the easement owners all sign a deed dedicating Letchagia Road to the public. So that instrument will then make Letchagia Road a public street.
Okay, so that will come off their tax rules? And those preliminary discussions already been held? Okay, so they've all agreed to that conception?
Yes. On the paving of that road, the standard that we gave to Alex's team was the same specs that we used when we went out in 2016 on the RFP for the roads. So they'll be built for the same standard, fighting dock, having that.
Next question I have is, what are the percolation rates that we're concerned about? I don't know, I'm looking to him, I'm not looking to you.
I didn't bring the, Alex, I didn't bring the geotechnical report with me, but we do have those numbers. I can get them to you, but I don't have them.
Yeah, I'm just so, having done developments like this, put in ponds, but also knowing sometimes things don't perk very quickly around here. There's a constant water hole we have over by Holiday and Express, which is in my ward, that hasn't been empty the entire year. You can go swimming in there every day if you want. So I just worry about the addition rates and what your design spec was for that.
What I can say about it is that the geotechnical engineer will not give his approval, or he'll provide recommendation as to how to improve the foundation of the pond if the percolation rate isn't up to standard. But I don't, I can recall off the top of my head what the geotechnical report says.
Yeah, that's one I have that I do get concerned about, to the point about mosquitoes and the implications associated with that. My view, and what's the size, so clearly you have a border associated with that.
Five foot ditch.
Was the determination of the size driven by how much land you have, or was it driven by the geotechnical report?
So the size of the pond, we went off of Opasso standards, because Opasso standards tend to, they're pretty strict when it comes to drainage. And we didn't really have City of Alpine standards for drainage. So the size of the pond was dictated by the amount of runoff produced by the development. And according to Opasso standards, you have to keep at least a minimum of a foot of freeboard after a 100-year event. So the size has been, the pond has been sized big enough to retain a 100-year event and still have more than a foot of freeboard.
So that I get, so that's good. Then the next question is, percolation rate. If you can perk, you go through, because, and what you don't want to get into is the mosquito side, which is the concern that's going to arise to me and by residents around there. That's why I want to understand the percolation report, given you were to have an event like we happen to have more often around here than not, with the on size. But I worry about how long that water is going to stand.
Water drains, drains into the ground, not on the lake.
No, no, that's where you want it to go, there's no question. So what I ask is a technical question. Size sounds good if you're basing it on Opasso from a size standpoint. Then it's how long will it sit there before it drains through? That has nothing to do with Opasso, it has nothing to do with the core samples.
And the percolation rates are not taken from Opasso percolations. That's why we take the geotechnical report.
That's why the question, how long will the water stand?
I don't have that information.
Because if it stands, and it doesn't drain out, again, I go back to Holiday and Express, that puddle that we all see on Highway 118, because I said, we got a water leak. There's no water leak there. It is a clay bottom, it just collects water. So I hate to keep, I can't be pedantic on this. I would not want to have that be a mosquito pond. So if it is a mosquito pond, what will you all's approach be? The only way you can resolve that is you gotta chlorinate it, or you gotta aerate it. Do you have a strategy for that?
I can't speak to that. That would have to be something that the developer discusses with the city, just because it involves money.
Yeah, no, I get all that, I get all that.
So I apologize. Can't make that call.
How quickly could you get an answer to that question?
Tomorrow, as soon as I get back to the office.
Yeah, because I'm in favor of this, but that's the one remaining issue I have concerns about.
That's the issue brought up by the residents.
Yeah, and that's a conservative.
A hell of a issue.
Would you all feel that that's an issue for the plan, for the town?
So I'm of a person who has two minds on this. One, approve the plan, you come back with satisfactory answer, we're good. And if you come back with an unsatisfactory answer, we'll disapprove the plan next week. I don't think you want to be in that bill because you guys want to put to work, right?
That's correct.
Any recommendations from the two holding the map?
No, I think that seems reasonable.
But I mean, approve the plan and withhold the approval of the development, depending on the...
Okay, that would make sense. That allows you to press on, okay? Although from a, having been out there many times, work is stocked. You guys are trying to get a plan approved, see if you can get one again, right?
Yeah, our informal agreement with the developer was that they could continue to do the digging up of the old pipes that were out there for the...
Yeah, the blind foundations and all that, yeah.
And do that, pending the development agreement being negotiated. Now we had a final and negative factor.
So if we approve the plan tonight but not approve the development agreement, would that work?
I believe that would work, and the proviso that would be that we won't approve the development agreement until they're satisfied with the percolation rate of the pond.
So with that, I'd like to amend the motion to say that... So with that, I'd like to amend the motion to say that we approved the Skyway Gardens plat as presented, and that we hold approval of the development agreement pending confirmation of percolation rates. Does that work for you, Alex?
Yeah, I just have a, does that withhold us from proceeding with the construction look?
I think all can proceed with construction, but it's going to be proceeding with construction subject to making sure the plat is approved. So you all have a building permit.
I guess that's why I see a ...
You have a building permit.
Right.
Whether the plat meets the development or building permit spring back to life, which the developer has to understand, he has one final, a pretty big step, which is their approval.
I guess my last question from an engineering standpoint is, does the City of Alpine have percolation rates that are deemed acceptable? Something that we can go off of and prove? This is the percolation rate, this is what the City of Alpine demands.
Did you hear that also, did you hear the value on the model?
Yeah, I don't believe, I'm fairly familiar with our building and standards. We don't have a perk rate.
I think that's going to be pretty important as far as us being able to have something that's acceptable.
Yeah, but if you were to come back and say, given the percolation rates, and this particular flood rate, we expect there's going to be water in there for, not more than two days, you'd probably get us to say, that makes sense, because that's kind of normal in Alpine. You're going to come back and say, given the percolation rates, you have the event. How deep is your pond?
Nine feet.
Nine feet. If you're to come back and say, hey, that nine-foot pond is going to go down six inches a day, and it's going to take three weeks to get it emptied out, you're probably getting an answer back unless it says, no, you got to do something different. And when I say something different, if you aerate it, that's a different story, because then you're going to take care of mosquito issues.
If we do, on our groundwater conservation district, Dr. Kevin Urbanic is rarely accessible to provide, you know, us in the city feedback. And he's been doing geology and water studies in this area for well over thirty years. He's very, very responsive to these types of questions for us.
At Dover, there's a big collection pit directly across the street from where the water disappears after a break. You know what I'm talking about.
Oh, yeah, no, I just been down this path too many times. Nine feet's pretty deep, and I get a lot of that depth, which is, how long is it going to sit? And your core sample, let you that question. Thank you, Ron.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, then we'll go ahead and vote on it, on the amended motion. Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, blind side. Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Honorable mayor, to the council, item two is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action according to section 4.02A of the city charter, requesting the city council's consent of hiring for the department head positions of finance director, utilities director. Megan Antrim is being recommended as the city finance director. And Scott Perry is being recommended as the utility director. I did provide in your packets background information and candidates. Miss Antrim had a conflict this evening, but I think all of you have worked with her for multiple years. Mr. Scott Perry is here this evening. If you have any questions for him, please, I may all vote to.
Is that your resume, it's a good resume?
How are you all doing this evening?
Pretty good.
You have any questions for me?
Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Well, sixth-generation Texan, from the hill country originally. I live in Fort Davis, Texas now. Moved out here about a year ago. My father was a city manager. My grandfather was a city superintendent. My mother was a city secretary. So I didn't really have much of a choice.
You had it all messed up.
But it kind of gave me an interesting perspective early on, as to how to get things done, and how to figure out how to get things done through other people, and communicate. Strange things I'll probably never have to deal with, I've seen how they get to be used. So it was a good training ground to grow up in. As soon as I got out of school, I went about to work in the utilities field. Been working full-time in water and wastewater utilities for public service for over twenty-six years, only twenty-seven now. Also served consecutively as a part-time police officer in the past. Served as fire chief in a small-town department. Most recently was employed as city manager, or city administrator, actually, in Davis, Texas, prior to moving out here. And served as public works director as well for that community. Loved it. It came time for contract time, and the better half of mine had been talking for a long time about moving out here, and we finally found the place we wanted last year, and made the move. Just kind of sat around and prayed that something good was going to come along. Been working in the area, down in the Madera Valley, water supply, helping those guys. Previously, when I first came out, was helping out with rains and falls. But I just really hadn't found anything that was a good feel. And I've part of this for a long time. Seen a lot of great opportunities coming at this position, personally, and a new opportunity. Scott, what's brought you today?
Do you have any certificates?
Yes, I've been licensed in groundwater production C since ninety-six, United States. Wastewater since the following year. It lasted for a while, I got it back a few years. But currently carry a double C registration, ineligible test for B currently, for further classes. Did also previously carry my TCQ landfill permit. Wasn't required to carry it in my last year's job, so it was one of those things that I had so many licenses going on. I just had to let something go somewhere, so I think it was by the wayside.
If, given the position, would you, how do you feel about training supportants in getting their licenses?
Paramount importance above all really on it, because if I got to get called out at three o'clock in the morning to work on something, the more the individual next to him knows, the better we all are. And one hand washes the other in this business, literally, so. And this business is changing a lot in the last decade. It's become much more a technical field than it used to be, just as TCQ will tell you. And I don't think a lot of training formats in Texas have kept up with that in-house, and a lot of communities, it's not unusual. I think it's up to the stewards of the community and managers to ensure that that continuity is there.
Pretty good, more questions?
Scott, so what do you know about our system, our systems between water and wastewater?
Only what I've been able to mostly self-evaluate. Really haven't learned prior or anything too much, but I know there's been a little going on with TCQ region-wide, it's a small world, you know, so you kind of hear what's going on here. I know a little bit about having a wastewater plant and some issues like that. But there've been some ongoing things with water. In my opinion, nothing that's that detrimental, it's all fixable. But it's going to take a comprehensive plan of action, and particularly a plan of taxing lockdown. Don't know too in-depth, because of professionalism, didn't really want to ask too many questions, putting money behind.
What's kind of the largest number of people you supervise?
Twenty-one, twenty-three, have not seen it. Small communities. We worked in large, my personal career out there for about twenty, oh, about twenty-three years. We were a large rural water supply, covering four camping areas. Even though we were a large entity, we had fourteen employees in that area. So we looked large in nature, but we're pretty small in reality.
What would you say was your biggest failure, and what you learned from it? And what was your best success, and what you learned from it?
Biggest success, about three years ago, was appointed to the Texas Department of Public Safety as over emergency management in the state of Texas. And I worked some past disasters on mitigation issues of getting these systems back up immediately for sanitation, things like that. For the years I had done some of that, it was placed on the DPS's emergency response. There's only six of us in the state, and that was a result of us having to work through issues that we hadn't ever worked through, and develop standard operating procedures for things that didn't actually exist. And now being on that advisory committee, it's kind of a big honor to me. I feel like that's one of my bigger triumphs, because that took several years and a lot of heartache to get that going. Biggest failures is, and time is seeming to solve it for me, but learning personality management. I'll be the first to admit it. And also, I can't stand micromanaging, but I also have a tendency to be setting my ways on doing things. And sometimes I have to remember, hey, there's more to do it. And also, times, and the older I get, the more I listen, I find that people have a better way to do it than I do sometimes, so. Through the years, these things developed. It's never affected me management-wise, but years ago, I used to be a lot more closed-minded, because I was taught this way. But now, I'm more prone to say, hey, let's all get together here, and this is where our issue is. What can we collectively do to resolve this? It's taken a lot of years and a lot of travel and effort to get there, but maybe your flaws is never helping.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
Any questions? Thank you for your honesty, that was worth it to do that.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely. I will also say that, you know, the water wastewater utility position is something that, you know, I turned, I think, Virgil, the warrants, to Jay. It was the one position I had to come and counsel multiple times. My interactions with Scott, I was very drawn to his way with people, and his intelligence in the industry. And I really felt like he would be a longstanding team fighter for us. And I think that's so important in Alpine. I think just, you know, I always say we show ourselves in our first five minutes. And I think, you know, what he's shown is that intelligence, and that demeanor, and that connection, that's going to be so important with our team members, and so we have continuity in our leadership position.
I agree with you there, because, you know, we've had some turnovers here. Our utilities have suffered because of lack of leadership. But with your honesty, and you, and I know your wife's employee here also, and you'll be around for quite a while, and that's what we need, is some fluidity, continuity, as you stated. So we get this thing back on track.
Yeah, I kind of jokingly told Eric when he asked me kind of what my plans were, I said, you know, school's over, training's over, and I'm not looking for stepping stone. I'm looking for, I've got a lot of years still to work. I'm in my forties, and I'm not going anywhere. This, to me, is the most alarming job with the most long-term potential that I think everybody individually in this room, which all the time, can reap the benefits and really see the results of the work. You know, and here, that's pretty exciting. We're looking forward to the prospect.
One of the things that Eric has done, and others, is he built a hundred-day-a-day plan. You've probably heard Eric talking about it earlier. Is you have the same perspective about getting your, being able to come back, not only to Eric, but also help keep up speed on what you see as your hundred-day-a-day plan, and to be able to do the work that I. From my standpoint, I would say, certainly involves relationships with TCQ types of, to making sure that our wastewater treatment plant is taken care of. We've made some decisions on investments to get those up on our mind. We got a building out there that's kind of empty, it's got a lot of work to be done. So there's no loss for opportunities. I think the challenge in this role is, what's a disciplined, thoughtful process and plan to play that out?
Sure, sure. No, I think that not only is it unreasonable, but a great idea, I think that for consumer confidence, for the council's confidence, and also staff, it could be a great idea to put a template together, a comprehensive evaluation, to find where our shortcomings and our strengths are. If the whole of everyone is going to put a real map together, they're going to figure out how to get out of here.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate it.
Anything for Eric and Phil to counter?
You said that you had, which licenses?
Currently, C groundwater, C wastewater.
And you were working on the beer?
I'm eligible, actually, I was thinking, when I visited with Eric, that I was going to have to take another class, but I got to looking through my transcript and called TCQ, and they said. The only reason I've never taken it is because I haven't never been required. And it's a very, pretty tough exam, and I've never failed one, so my pride was always in stick. But I actually don't have any reservations or concerns whatsoever, but I'll take it.
I do like that you talked about working together, I like teamwork, that's important.
Only way to get it done.
That's right.
Thank you all very much. So Mr. Mayor, I would propose that the council approve the city manager's recommendation to hire Megan Antrim as the city finance director, and Scott Perry as the city utility director.
Okay, motions made, the second, need discussion. Seeing none, all is in order.
I do, would like to discuss. Thank you, Mr. Perry, for coming in. Very impressive. Going over the application, and seeing your credentials, education, work experience, I think that yes, she will be a planned addition to our staff here in the City of Alpine. Regarding the finance director, Megan Antrim, I'm still not too convinced she's the best for the position. I've been here two and a half basic years, and seeing her performance at council meetings, and of course, budget formulation and so forth. And I think she's okay, but I think there are better candidates out there. And the harshest thing I could say is, as you know, Eric, since basically February of last year, we have been through a, I'm not sure what the right word is, a firestorm of personal issues. Here at the city, we're polarized, employees polarized us as a council. And that's spilled over into the community, and creating great divides. And to the point that we had to bring in a quota specialist in personal matters to give us some, an outline or an idea as to why all of this is happening. And it costs us, but it costs us a lot of money. Well, I should say not us, but the city. Although there's nothing written, so it's kind of hard to sort of reveal the transparency on this. But after time passes, it came to light, and this is just in my opinion, that Ms. Atrium was pretty much the, at the apex or the center of a large part of this firestorm that we experienced. And I, giving her the position really reinforces and basically reporting her for what has happened. I don't recommend it. But you, sir, are the leader, you are the elected official to take care of administrative problems. The decision is, in essence, yours. But as a councilman, I would say, you know, give it a second thought. I cannot support it.
Ms. Perry, yes. Mr. Scott, yes.
Anybody else? Okay, we can go ahead and vote. All who's in favor of hiring, or agree with city manager Zimmer and these folks. I think we should go ahead and vote on it, you know. We need to move on. So all who's in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Opposed, blind side. Okay, the motion carries, thank you.
Okay, item three, city manager.
Honorable mayor, city council, I'm pleased to discuss and consider the first reading of ordinance 2019-10-01. It's ordinance, City of Alpine, Texas, establishing a school zone adjacent to Alpine High School along State Highway 118 and State Highway 223, establishing a speed limit in the school zone at fifteen miles per hour. Law requirements are flashing, authorizing traffic control signs to be installed. Establishing a fine for the violation of those regulations.
those requirements. There has been information included in your packet that came from TechDOT, Chris Weller, superintendent, that can catch you, has been involved in those discussions. And then I also asked our air race chief, Darryl LaSoya, to provide an assessment, as are de facto traffic engine, so that was included. Originally, I think in some of the discussions between TechDOT and superintendent, there was some discussions about 20 mile an hour, that's why on those pictures, you saw the rendering. Give city secretary Salas credit for going back to our ordinance, which was included in your packet as well, that the City of Alpine, any school zone, is 50. We have Darryl LaSoya here tonight, if there's any questions for him or any concerns.
So in order to get the ball rolling, I had moved that the council approved the first reading of ordinance 2019-10-01, City of Alpine, establishing schools, school zone adjacent to the Alpine High School along State Highway 118 and State Highway 223, establishing a speed limit of 15 miles an hour while vehicles are flashing.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's made, second, any discussions?
So, I know it's looking at the elementary school on Highway 118, we have certain hours, is it the same that we would have those same hours at the high school? Is that the plan, Darryl, or do you know? Can you talk to that?
Good evening. How are you all? Good. So, the way the school zones are activated is actually out of El Paso. There's a person in El Paso that turns on the switch, or it's set on a timer, on whatever the school decides they want their school, the school zone activated. So, like, for the elementary school, don't totally agree with the hours that they've chosen to turn on the school lights and when to turn them off, but that's something we'll discuss with the school district and explain that, and depending on what time the kids are required to be at, or the high school students are required to be at the high school, and what time they're going to be leaving. And also, they also consider if there's early outs, if there's a special function going on, that we need to make sure that everybody's aware. One of the things I always like to consider is Veterans Day, over, and it's usually held at the baseball field, and so that's one of the times that we'll contact TechDOT in El Paso and tell them, we have a special event going on, please turn on the lights at this time, just to make them aware of it. I love the idea of having the school zone, I can tell in there, it's something that's way past you, and I think it's a good project to keep our kids and our staff safe.
Yeah, one of the challenges I think we're going to have, that we don't have at the elementary school, the middle school, is consistent progress.
Let me go back with that, because I've learned, working the school zones for 25 years, usually the parents are the ones that I have a problem dealing with, because they're running from one campus to the other, when the students are usually just trying to get to one campus. And I've always been an early bird, even when I was in high school, so I was always one of the first ones there, I wanted to be the kid waiting for everybody else to arrive. And so, I've noticed that a lot of the high school students do that as well. The majority of the students are in band, and that's usually the first class, and they're there early with Chuck Wilson, and they're ready up to start marching on that pavement.
So when they're showing up, for example, for band practice?
Yes, sir.
Would the lights then go on, probably, or?
Well, the thing too that we have to consider is that middle school brings students that are in band, the seventh and eighth grade, are brought to the high school during the band. And so, those are a lot of things that we have to take into consideration for the times of the lights.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
That's it, thank you for any more discussion. Seeing none, all's in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, blank sign, motion carries, and kill for adoption.
And city councilman, comments and answers.
I'll start on my left.
Oh, geez, me, I've talked for the first hour and a half, so. No, it was good meeting. Thanks, Eric, for the updates on the city manager report, very, very helpful. You're a good inspiration. Welcome, Scott, to be on board, and welcome back, Eric.
Thank you all for coming, Eric. I loved the presentation, it was great, and of course, I'm glad to have Mr. Perry and Megan back.
Thank you all for coming, and I agree with having Scott and having Megan back.
Hey, thanks for coming, and again, welcome, Mr. Scott, and look forward to working with you.
I agree with you.
Okay, thank you all very much, and city manager, he had some great presentations, which we really appreciate that he was a lot of insight. Councilman Seaver's here too.
Mayor, I move to adjourn to the park.
We adjourned. That's repatable.